Hello and welcome to Meet the Candidates, a forum for those running for Anoka County Commissioner, District 4 in the November 8th election. This candidate forum is being sponsored by the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters and is being recorded by North Metro TV as a public service to voters. My name is Leslie Waterhouse and I'm a member of the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters. I live in Big Lake and cannot vote for either of the candidates. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates. The League encourages informed and active participation in government. We advocate for important issues and help citizens become informed voters. We welcome all who are interested in learning about a variety of issues to join our organization. Just go to LWVABCMN.org to learn more about the League. This Meet the Candidate Forum is about informing voters. It's held to provide an opportunity to hear from candidates on important issues and compare their ideas. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. The League posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. To begin the forum, candidates will answer two introductory questions they received in advance, followed by questions that were submitted by the public via our website, and then we will end with closing statements. Answers are limited to 90 seconds for each of the two introductory questions and one minute for each of the other questions and closing statements. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates for Anoka County Commissioner, District 4, Raymond Zieran and Scott Schulte. Welcome and thank you both for participating in the forum.
Thank you.
So numbers were drawn to determine which candidate would begin, and then we'll rotate with each candidate being the first to answer. And then for closing statements, we'll begin in the reverse order. So we'll begin with you, candidate Zieran. What is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Well, first of all, thank you to the League for putting this forum on. I think it's important to be able to get information out to the voters, and so I thank you for the opportunity. I'm Raymond Zieran. I'm an electrician from Coon Rapids. Like a lot of people, I'm concerned about our democracy. I'm concerned that popular ideas are not being considered. I am concerned about that not everyone is able to fully participate in our society. And I'm concerned that some people are being marginalized. In 2019, I was appointed by Governor Tim Walz to the Metropolitan Council, and here I have served on the Environmental Committee and the Transportation Committee. I generally believe that people are good and are trying their best, and in the right environment, people will achieve their full potential.
Thank you. And candidate Schulte, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Well, first of all, thank you, Leslie, and the League for having us in tonight for the forum. My name is Scott Schulte. I am an auto mechanic from Coon Rapids, born and raised there for 60-plus years. I have a wife and nine kids, or five kids and nine grandkids. I have served in local office for 22 years. I served 12 years on the Coon Rapids City Council and now 10 years on the Anoka County Board. The reason I'm running again is to get more work done, improve transportation in Anoka County, to continue the work actually that the League has started recently, and that was to increase transparency from the Anoka County Board to the public, to make sure that they have full access to their elected officials. It is my goal to continue that work if I'm re-elected, to make sure that everybody is pleased with that level of transparency. I also believe that affordable housing is incredibly important right now, and I think there's a role for the county board in that process. And I want to continue to do my work on the county board to advance that, not just narrative, but that actual work as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Schulte, what are your goals for the future of Anoka County?
Well, as I stated in the last introductory opening remark, I have a number of goals. The two probably highest priority goals, transportation-related, would be finishing Highway 10, which we're very nearing completion, on a expressway conversion to a freeway. We will eliminate the stoplights and we will make this freeway not just safer, which is our paramount goal, but also much better for the environment, a lot less idling of cars. Cars can move through freely. And then, of course, that means shortened commute times. Then we need to work on Highway 65. Highway 65 has been a mess for far too long. It's a state highway. But the county has one major roadway that intersects with Highway 65 at 109th. That's our County Road 12. And we intend to grade-separate that interchange and then continue on again with the transparency work in Anoka County, affordable housing, and continuing to improve our fabulous park and trail system.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, what are your goals for the future of Anoka County?
Well, my goals, first priority is prosperity for all residents. We need to find ways to reduce our overall cost of living, and we need to support people in ways that bring out their best. We do this by planning and building out a multimodal transportation system, and we do this by addressing workforce skills gaps and particularly using apprenticeship training modules.
Thank you. And now for the questions that came from the public via our website, and each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to the questions. Candidate Zieran, what is the role of the county in assuring its natural resources and water quality are addressed and their quality maintained?
The role of the county is to make plans and be able to implement those plans to maintain good quality water throughout. That's a really good question. I'd need to reflect and think a little bit more about that.
All right. Thank you. And candidate Schulte, what is the role of the county in assuring its natural resources and water quality are addressed and their quality maintained?
Well, it's a question that has a really long answer. I'll start with, one of our important goals and duties as county commissioners is to appoint watershed district members. That's important. We need to work with our Soil and Water Conservation District closely. We need to fund them appropriately so they can continue their important work. And then immediately within the county, we have our local public health nurses that are responsible for public health, and that includes water testing of local wells. It includes water testing for municipalities. Just a prime example would have been the Andover issue not too long ago that was brought up with the hazardous waste dump site, and Anoka County was first on scene to control that site, to work with the Metropolitan Council to make sure that the houses necessary were getting bottled water and that they weren't drawing from the aquifers that were contaminated.
Thank you. Candidate Schulte, what processes can you think of to create more transparency between county agencies and the public?
Again, we've worked closely with the League, and again, I thank them for their deep involvement over the last couple of years, attending numerous meetings to ensure and generate new ideas to make Anoka County more transparent. We continue to work with the League to make sure that can happen. That's important. I think we can, right now, all of our committee meetings, we allow full commentary, just like the Minnesota Senate or the Minnesota House of Representatives. Every committee, you have a chance to comment before the decision's made, before it gets to the county board for ratification. I think that's important. We should continue to offer easier ways for people to do that. It shouldn't always have to be in person. Commissioner Meisner, for instance, accepts email comments for her meetings, and I'm open to those ideas. I think it's great to, every opportunity to engage the public more deeply with their elected officials is just critical. It's critical for a successful democracy where people feel represented.
Right. Thank you. And candidate Zieran, what process, I'm sorry, what processes can you think of to create more transparency between county agencies and the public?
Well, transparency and accountability has been one of the major themes of my campaign going forward. When I'm at the doors, I'm talking about accountability and transparency. And I think we start by opening up comment period at the general board meeting. I think that's a beginning point. I think we need to have a code of ethics voted on by the commission as a baseline for ability to keep each other accountable for the way we treat each other. I think that's really important. I think that one thing that we did at the Metropolitan Council is we instituted an email address at the beginning of each meeting. That email address would be announced by the chair as a place, a portal for the public to comment about the meeting, and then that comment to be then put into public record.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, what do you see as the future of public transportation in Anoka County, especially in your district, and what are the current public transportation needs?
Well, I think for transportation and transit in particular, I think we need to view the North Star as our backbone for our transit. I would restore the pre-pandemic levels of service, work to try to expand it all the way to St. Cloud. I think we also need to look at what it means to have a multimodal transportation system. And that, to me, means that one thing that is going to come about is a public option for an Uber-type application on your phone. You'll be able to call up an ad, call up a car on, Diane's giving me 15 seconds, I'm never going to get it out in 15 seconds. But multimodal means multiple ways of getting about the county and doing it at a cheap and inexpensive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Schulte, what do you see as the future of public transportation in Anoka County, especially in your district, and what are the current public transportation needs?
Public transportation and transit is critical for a successful county. We have worked, every road we build in Anoka County, as Chair of the Transportation Committee, we ensure that there's multimodal options on every corridor we build, from pedestrian to bike lanes. That's all ADA accessible, is required in every project we build. We think it's really important. Our bus system, our transit system that's provided through the Metropolitan Council, our dial-a-ride service, all of that is so critical and so important for the average Anoka County resident to get around, particularly to those that are either infirmed or aged that aren't driving. And to maintain some independence, they need that ability to dial a ride. North Star has been on the rails now since 2009. It's, to this point, has not done well at all. We need to figure out a way to make North Star successful. I'll engage in those conversations to figure out what we can do.
Thank you. And candidate Schulte, are there ways that you would like to change Anoka County's relationship with the Metropolitan Council, especially with the controversial North Star rail? If so, how?
Thank you. Absolutely, I want that relationship to evolve. I want it to become more collegial, more beneficial to both parties. It's a challenging environment. We're dealing with elected officials in Anoka County, and then we deal with the appointed officials of the Metropolitan Council who are appointed by the governor. We don't get to deal directly with the elected governor, so it's a hard reality that we don't always agree. And when we don't agree, coming to the conclusion, the conclusion of an issue, whatever it is, whether it's North Star or dial-a-ride service, it's not easy. It's a long, convoluted process. We need to figure that out, and you don't figure that out via email or via Zoom meetings. I believe we need to meet in person, we need to shake hands, look each other in the eye, and come to an understanding of how we can work together as an elected body in Anoka County and an appointed body at the Metropolitan Council.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, are there ways that you would like to change Anoka County's relationship with the Metropolitan Council, especially with the controversial North Star rail? If so, how?
First of all, this is a big reason why I'm running. In 1967, the Met Council was created by the Minnesota Legislature because we had a failing private bus system. Our rivers were being used as a sewer, and the Metropolitan Council was created to be a regional solution to regional problems, problems that were too big for any city or county to solve. So this county board has decided that the regional solution is the problem, and the only way to solve that is for new leadership.
Thank you. Candidate Zieran, are there any changes to Anoka County's election process that you think should be made?
I think we've seen some really strong, I mean, Minnesota's always been the number-one voter turnout in the nation. We've got safe and secure elections. I voted early myself. We've got volunteers that are really well-trained. At the county level, our job is to fund it, put a budget to it, and let the system work and make sure that nobody is disenfranchised and have full access to being able to vote.
Thank you. Candidate Schulte, are there any changes to the Anoka County's election process that you think should be made?
There is not. Anoka County simply implements state law. That's how elections are run. Minnesota Legislature designates a process, and counties carry out that process. If there was anything I could do to allay the fears of those who don't think the elections are being handled properly, it would be to suggest that they get much more deeply involved, become an election judge, get involved in the process so you can see how transparent and just how accurate Anoka County elections are held. Every year after the elections, we do an audit of four or five precincts that are hand-drawn in a blind drawing, and their electronic records are compared to the hand-count record. And that's been going on now for over 20 years, and there has not been one single vote that has been mistallied by the electronic machines. So I would encourage people to get involved if you're not, and secondly, I would just tell you to rest easy that Anoka County elections are in great hands.
Thank you. Candidate Schulte, would you move to ensure that county residents have an opportunity to be heard at regular county board, commissioner committee, county board work sessions, and county advisory committee board meetings? If yes, how? If no, why not?
I'm a pretty direct guy, so I'll just say no. When the decisions get to the county board, the decision's already made at the committee. The board simply ratifies what the committees have recommended. For somebody to speak there, it's too late. That's why we've opened up, at the League's request, and actually a very valid request, to open up our committee meetings to public comment, because that's before the decision's made. That's before the county board members that are on that committee have come to a conclusion of how they want a specific issue to go. So that's the best time to comment. Commenting at the county board meeting is after the horse has left the barn, the decision's been made, and it really is, in my opinion, almost counterproductive. I think it's so much better if people are engaged early so the county board members can hear them, and their wise words coming from our citizenry has a chance to be reflected in the decision made by the county commissioners.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, would you move to ensure that county residents have an opportunity to be heard at our regular county board, commissioner committee, county board work sessions, and county advisory committee board meetings? If yes, how? If no, why not?
Yes. Our community is diverse, and we should find people. We should listen to the people that are in every way possible. I think that transparency is fundamental, and accountability is fundamental. And the only reason that you wouldn't have transparency and accountability is because your ideas are unpopular and you want to hide your unpopular ideas from the public.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, the county board is proposing a flat tax levy for 2023 and addressing staff wages and cost increases through county reserves. For 2024 and future years, what services are you willing to curtail or eliminate to avoid a property tax increase, or will residents likely face increases after recent years of flat levies?
Good question. I wouldn't want to cut services in any way. I wouldn't want to raise taxes in any way. Minnesota has been, and Anoka County, has been a net loss to the federal government. We've been paying into the federal government and not getting back what we've paid in. I would work with, I've got national organizational relationships, and I would work to bring that federal money back to fill the gaps in our budget and be able to make strategic investments in our economy so that our tax base expands.
Thank you. And candidate Schulte, the county board is proposing a flat tax levy for 2023 and addressing staff wages and cost increases through county reserves. For 2024 and future years, what services are you willing to curtail or eliminate to avoid a property tax increase, or will residents likely face increases after recent years of flat levies?
Thank you. We've had a 0% increase for the last three years. We are not using reserves. We are using asset preservation funds. Our reserves are at 38.1%. We'll never let them drop below that, so we will not use reserves. But we will use our asset preservation account as deemed necessary to maintain a flat levy this year. I don't see taxes going up in 2024 and beyond. I think we can continue to budget wisely. Again, I've been on the county board for 10 years, and for 10 years, I've heard, oh, we're going to have to raise taxes next year. We're going to have to raise taxes next year. But we keep putting our shoulder to the wheel. We don't cut services. Our services are provided today as they were 10 years ago when I got on the board. What we do is we become more innovative, we become more fiscally responsible, at the same time serving the citizenry to the level they expect while not raising their taxes. We think we're being prudent with the dollars. We think 24 and beyond look really healthy.
Thank you. Candidate Schulte, what are you going to do to get reliable, quality internet to all areas of the county?
That is an easy question to answer because I've worked so hard on that for the last two years. With the advent of the pandemic, we found that when people went to go to school from home and work from home, that there were parts of our county that were just not being served, some that were underserved. And so we've dedicated a little over $9.8 million of our CARES dollars and our ARPA dollars into not just mapping that area, that was the $200,000 expense to map where the problems are, but now we're spending that money to bring in that last-mile provider, the people that are going to put that cable in the ground or are going to find a wireless connection. There's a number of different options that we're working through, but we will have Anoka County 100% served with broadband speed, high-speed internet within two years.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, what are you going to do to get reliable, quality internet to all areas of the county?
Well, this is one of the strategic investments that I think we need to do to ensure that we have a strong economy. And again, I'll leverage my national organizational relationships to bring federal dollars to Anoka County to help build that out. And I also think that if we use public dollars to build out a privately-owned network, that we should have provisions for low-cost options for people without the means and for free access in public spaces that is provided by the internet provider as for a good for our society.
Thank you. Candidate Zieran, how can commissioners and the Sheriff's Department and other Anoka departments work together to increase public safety in Anoka County?
I think it's really important. Public safety has been an issue on people's minds a lot lately. I believe we're like 10 deputies down on hiring. Like every job, it's really hard to recruit and maintain. I think the first step is we figure out what the new market level is, so what's the market rate for a deputy for law enforcement? We're going to need to find a way to hire and retain people, and that means paying them a wage that is market rate or close to market rate, and then ask them why, what is it that will help them stay in the job? And working conditions are just as important as pay, and officers need respect and dignity.
Thank you. Candidate Schulte, how can commissioners and the Sheriff's Department and other Anoka departments work together to increase public safety in Anoka County?
Public safety is paramount to quality of life. If you don't feel comfortable in your home, if you don't feel comfortable in your neighborhood, your quality of life is not good. In Anoka County, we've been blessed to have Sheriff James Stewart at the helm and Attorney Tony Palumbo as our county attorney. They need to work hand-in-hand. We will have a new sheriff and a new county attorney after 2022, starting in 2023. It's imperative that the county board continues to fund those budgets. We have just increased the salaries across the entire Sheriff's Department and across the county attorney's office. Prior to our Helios study, we did that to make sure that that area got the attention it deserved. We also believe, public safety being one of the highest priorities for our citizens, that we have to stay on top of those budgets. We have to make sure that everybody's funded at the right level. We continue to do that. We continue to work with the Joint Law Enforcement Council, which every community in Anoka County is a part of.
Thank you. Candidate Schulte, if you support, do you support building a new, oh, sorry. If you support building a new jail in Anoka, what are your priorities or concerns getting that built, and what are your preferences for its funding?
I do support a new jail in Anoka County. State law requires that it's built in the county seat, so it would have to be built in the city of Anoka. Our jail is the oldest in the metro. It was an antiquated design when they built it. It was a bad design. It's unsafe for not just the inmates, but also for our corrections officers that work within the jail. We also, we are spending upwards of $2 million a year housing inmates at Sherburne County and at Wright County because we don't have enough space. It's untenable to release dangerous criminals back to society because we don't have space or we don't have the funds to move them out of county. So it makes more sense to build a new facility right here in Anoka County, in the city of Anoka. There are some hurdles that we're jumping over, and those are, the city of Anoka would prefer not to have it in Anoka, maybe not downtown. So we're working with them, hand-in-hand, in many meetings with long hours, to make sure that we keep the city happy while we get this jail built.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, if you support building a new jail in Anoka, what are your priorities or concerns getting that built, and what are your preferences for its funding?
Look, I'm a construction guy. I like building stuff. I want to build stuff, right? I want to build a jail. But we also need to stop and take a step back and to consider other levels of government and what like the city of Anoka would like to have. They have, they feel like they haven't been included on the construction process, that Scott has ran this thing down their throat, and I think that we need a new look at this. We need to stop and work collaboratively with other levels of government.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, I'll let you get a drink of water. Should the county video-record and post on its YouTube channel their workshops and commissioner committee meetings, one but not the other, and why or why not?
Well, I think we should video-record all of it, and it should be made available to the public. I mean, the only reason why you would not is because you're afraid of accountability. You're afraid of transparency.
Thank you. And candidate Schulte, should the county video-record and post on its YouTube channel their workshops and commissioner committee meetings, one but not the other, and why or why not?
Yeah, I'm still up in the air on both of those. I want to continue to work with the League to figure out what we can do to make those meetings more available to the public. There's a couple of concerns. If you video-record and stream YouTube videos of county work sessions, that perhaps you're not going to have the free flow of information, the free flow of comments amongst commissioners that we currently have. And that, I think, is, it's critical for good governance to have that free flow, for an elected official to speak their mind of what their constituents are thinking. And I'm a little concerned how a live camera might take that down a notch. As far as committee meetings, I'm fine with committee meetings being As far as committee meetings, I'm fine with committee, committee meetings being televised, but it will require quite a bit of revenue. So we're going to have to decide if we're willing to raise taxes to make that happen. And if, if the public reaches out to me and we work with the league and we decide that's a priority, then we'll raise taxes and we'll do that.
Thank you. And candidate Schulte, putting aside issues, what personal traits make you well-suited for this office?
Well, I love people. I think that really helps. Again, I'm an auto repair technician by trade. I've been in the same shop now since I was 11 years old. I'm 62, so I think my math tells me that's 51 years. And I've learned that you've got to fix things when they're broken and when they're not broken, you've got to maintain them somehow. You've got to keep them going. You've got to maintain them so they'll go a long time. I like the sense of accomplishment of getting something done. And that's what I find at the county board. We can get a lot done in a short amount of time if we put our shoulder to the wheel and work hard at it. I enjoy that. I think that's an important part of it. And I think probably my biggest attribute that makes me really good for this position is I listen. I listen to people when they talk. I don't always try to come up with that canned answer that I'm going to throw back at them while they're speaking. I try and engage with what they're saying. I try and really listen. And it might take me a second or two to digest it before I'm willing to come up with an answer, or I may tell them I'll have to get back to you. But listening, I think, is really important. I think that's one of my stronger attributes.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, putting aside issues, what personal traits make you well-suited for this office?
Well, great question. I'm, I'm a relentless learner and problem solver. And I have a strong sense of justice and restoration. And, and I just have to say that my favorite movies are Seabiscuit, Seabiscuit, Titanic, and Forrest Gump. Yeah, you can get a laugh from that, but because, it's because I like history and I love stories of redemption, redemption and restoration. And I think, and I think I can bring that to the county board and help, help people redeem themselves and, and restore.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, the Anoka area has a rich history and commitment to libraries to preserve and share. How can the county better support the Anoka County Library System and Anoka County Historical Society?
Well, this is a subject that I don't know a whole lot about. I'll, I'll say this, just in broad strokes, that the way I understand it is the library board is appointed by the, the, the council or by the commissioners and, and also funded by the commissioners. Generally speaking, I would look to find strong, knowledgeable people to, to be installed in, in that and then fund them and get out of their way.
Thank you. And candidate Schulte, the Anoka area has a rich history and commitment to libraries to preserve and share. How can the county better support Anoka County Library System and Anoka County Historical Society?
Well, we do appoint the members of the library board and they do, once we give them the money for their budget, they do handle that. They receive a lot of MELSA dollars, which is state and federal dollars that come through specifically for libraries. We have one of the most robust library systems in the metro. We work hard at that. We have a number of locations. The Historical Society, on the other hand, is a 501(c)(3). That is not a part of the Anoka County funding stream. However, we do have an appropriation to them annually in the $365,000 range. So we are committed to that 501(c)(3) and to the history of Anoka County. We think it's important. We know that libraries are important. We know they're changing. We know they're not what they once were. We used to have 2 million visitors a year in our libraries and we're now down to closer to a half a million. But that's because they're using digital opportunities, they're using the eBooks and so many different ways to access libraries. And we hope to continue that and expand that in the years to come.
Thank you. So that ends the question and answer portion of the forum. And so now for closing statements, and each candidate will have one minute. And we'll begin in the reverse order we started, so we'll begin with you, candidate Schulte. So if you'd like to, please go ahead with your closing statement.
Thank you. Although I've been in office 22 years, I don't consider myself a seasoned politician. I'm a local elected official who's doing the work of the public. I, I work on the street corner of Hanson and Coon Rapids Boulevard in a small shop where, where it's open to the public daily. They visit me, they come in. I hear what's going wrong on the streets. I hear what's going right. It's good for me to hear that. It's good for me to stay grounded every day. When I do something that the people don't like, they come and tell me. It's not very often, but they do come and tell me and then I react and I do my best to change. It's important for an elected official to realize that they're not always right. And when you're not right, recognize it and make that adjustment. I think we're doing that in Anoka County. I think when the league started working with us, we had a roadblock up and it said, no, we're doing everything we're supposed to do to leave us alone. But during that process, during these two years of engaging with the league, I have learned a lot. I have gained a lot of knowledge and I thank them for that engagement and look forward to the next four years.
Thank you. And candidate Zieran, if you'd like to go ahead with your closing statement?
Sure. I'm Raymond Zieran. I'm an electrician, not a politician. My campaign has been about transparency and accountability, transportation and transit, and respect and dignity for all workers. Without frontline workers, our society will fail. I believe that government is the shock absorber for the people and we, we should be working towards a common good. And I can leverage my national organizational relationships to bring tax dollars back to Anoka County and build out an infrastructure that makes our economy, economy recession-resistant and lower our overall cost of living.
Thank you. And thank you both candidates for running for Anoka County Commissioner, District 4, and for being a part of the democratic process by running for office and being willing to serve your communities. And thank you both for being here this evening. Thank you also viewers for your interest in becoming informed voters. We hope that this forum has helped you to make an informed decision. As we move through the election season, link to all of our local election forums at lvvacmn.org. If you have questions left unanswered by the forum, please contact the candidates directly. To register to vote or update your registration, go online to mnvotes.gov. You can also register when you go to vote. There are a lot of races on this year's ballot and redistricting has taken place. So if you're unsure where to vote or if you want to preview what will be on your ballot, you can also go to mnvotes.gov. And when you vote, you participate in our democracy, you make it stronger and you make it yours. Vote on or before November 8th. Thank you.